Go ahead, Kelsey.
The Board of Direct Entry Midwifery Meeting is convening at 8:06 a.m. on April 14th, 2022, at the Health Licensing Office in Salem, Oregon by teleconference call. I will now call rule. Kelsey Fisher here. Meredith Klein.
Here. Beth Iva.
Not here yet. Wendy Smith?
Here.
Christine Morales?
Here.
Lynette Pettibone?
Here.
Meredith Mance?
Here.
Members, when you wish to speak, please state your last name for the record. For the record, public members calling into the public phone line are asked to email April Fleming at April.Fleming@DHSOHA.state.or.us and provide your first and last name. Public and interested parties' feedback may be heard during the public interested parties' feedback period if indicated on the agenda. Everyone is asked to use appropriate language, manners, and protocols when conducting board business. The meeting is called to order. I think our first order is approval of the agenda.
This is when I motioned to approve the agenda.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Wendy Smith, second.
Great.
Yeah, Wendy Smith, second.
Vote, Kelsey Fisher, aye. Meredith Klein?
Aye.
Beth Iva, absent still. Wendy Smith?
Aye.
Christine Morales?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone?
Aye.
Meredith Mance?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. So our next, number three on our agenda is administrative rule review. Talking about our rules, drafts, and schedule.
Sylvia, we can't hear you, I don't think, or I can't hear you.
Like, where's Sammy? We're lost.
Here comes Sylvia.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So Sammy's on medical leave, and so she will not be attending and hopefully be back to work soon, but we just don't know what's the time.
Okay.
And another thing, I wanted to introduce Angie. So Angie is an AAG. She works with Heather. Heather's also on vacation, so she's out. Angie and Heather have met several times to get Angie caught up speed on where you guys are in rules, and then also regarding what we're going to be talking about in executive session. So those are just a couple of little things. Sammy and I did meet, and also Angie's up to speed on it, too, so we know where you're at on the rules and what we need to talk about today. And then, obviously, this is recorded so that Sammy can listen to it later when she starts working on everything. So, Kelsey, whatever speed you want, we can go through the rules, you know, page by page. Kind of your call.
That sounds like the most logical way.
Is the, can I ask a question? This is Meredith Klein. Is this different than the three things from the rules that we were looking at specifically, or like, which was the TXA and the how peer review is worded? Are we talking?
And growth restriction. I think that those were the only three things we were looking to change.
Yeah, when you had gone, when the parking lot, that was the only things left. So we're not, like, going through the whole rules right now.
Correct.
Those three things. Okay, great. Just wanted to clarify. Some interesting articles about the TXA. Do we want to start there?
Sure.
Do we need to decide whether we're making a rack to, or did we already decide that that's what we're doing for all three?
Yeah, we already decided to make the rack, and we talked about who should be invited to it. I think this was just our last scheduled meeting to, like, deliberate on the draft that we wanted to send to the rack.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. So, other people, we'll draft it however we want today. The rack will look at it, and then we'll get it back eventually to, again, deliberate and then vote.
Okay, so Sammy sent you guys, hopefully you all got it and had a chance to review it, an email on Friday morning with a lot of information. I'm assuming that she got from Wendy that she's passing along. Did everybody have a chance to review all that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So do we get to decide whether we're proposing or, you know, writing a rule that includes us using it IV, which is, seems like the most effective route, and/or also oral? There were some articles in there about using it together with cytotech, which seemed like it was okay, but not as great as the IV.
Yeah.
So, um, this is Wendy. Oh, sorry.
Go for it, Wendy.
Well, this is Wendy, and I mean, I don't know how we want to do this, but I mean, I think that we have to think about this in many different ways. Number one, regarding the IV use, I do not believe that you're going to get support for using this IV. The administrat-, even though in all the studies, it doesn't really talk about this, it just talks about giving it. Pretty much every, every pharmacy pharmacist supports giving this over a 10-minute period of time with very careful monitoring. There is a big obstetrical trial that did give it as a push over 30 to 60 seconds, and I have been arguing in our hospital setting that we should be transitioning to this, but no one is willing to listen. And I truly believe at this moment, you are not going to get support for carrying this as an IV medication. There are, there's extreme hypotension that can result from administering it, and, you know, I just don't think you're gonna get support. I reached out to EMS service, emergency medical services in three different counties. It's very, because I think we need to think about this as an emergency medication and to equate it to sort of using it as, in the field, as an EMS provider almost, right? And so what I found is that in the field by EMS, it's very county-specific. Not every county has this available, and it's dependent on the medical director. So I reached out to the medical directors and have gotten no response. What I found is that in Washington County, I believe, it was either Multnomah or Washington, where I was able to touch base with somebody from one of the EMS providers, that they do have its use in the field by EMS, but by, for very, very specific situations, and those situations are trauma-only. They do not include obstetrical hemorrhage from what I can see. And so I have written an email to the Marion, Multnomah, and Washington County Medical Directors to request that we discuss adding this as one of the indications so that at least it's available quickly, because I just don't feel like I can be supportive at this time of using it IV. The PO trials out there are not indicative of use at the time of hemorrhage. So there are only those two PO OB trials. The first one, I want you to just, I just want to call your attention, it was used prophylactically, and there was essentially, you know, maybe a little benefit, but oxytocin is still better, right? So oxytocin was just as good, and you carry oxytocin. So I don't believe there was a, you know, reason to consider giving it orally with NISO when you have oxytocin available. And then the other trial that used it at time of hemorrhage did not show any benefit at all. So I also don't really support the use PO at this time without any evidence. The last thing I want to say, and I've got to drive my kid, but I'm going to be listening, going to have to shut up, is that IM use, intramuscular use, has been studied out there, and I think my next step is to try to put together the IM use for this. It really took a little bit of digging to get it, and the trials are newer, but there is some real promise in using it in patients who have, even have shock and giving it IM, and you can get relatively quick therapeutic levels. So with maybe less concern over vital sign instability. So I think that my approach to this was, if we can make sure that EMS providers have it available, and one of the indications is for obstetric hemorrhage, that's one route to administer it IV. And then the second is, if we're going to consider it, consider it as, as, you know, try to, try to think about it as an IM injection, because you guys do do other IM injections, correct?
Yes.
So maybe considering it as an IM injection, but it's, I mean, I agree, this is so fascinating, and I'm so thoroughly interested in this right now. And I think, I think, though, this is not going to fly as an IV push medication in the field by LDMs. I just don't, I'm not, yeah, go ahead. I'm gonna start driving, but I'm gonna be listening.
Yeah, I don't know that we were saying it to be IV push. Like, my understanding of it is that it's a slower IV, which I don't, which we're capable of also doing.
So the way that the rule, this is Angie, just so you know, that the way that the rule is written right now, it's just in there as an intramuscular injection, and then it is in there as, as to be done, it looks like, oral administration. Yeah, those are the only two. That's the way it's in the rule that you guys have drafted so far.
Yeah, that's where Sammy must have put it for us, because I don't, I don't think we had discussed that yet.
Okay, good to know. I just was telling you where it was.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was seeing that as well.
But I think the point is that orally, it really, there's no evidence that it works orally, right? Unless you, unless you're doing it prophylactically, it's equivalent to oxytocin.
So my understanding of TXA, just with its mechanism of action, is that, as you were saying, it's more indicated for trauma. And so my thinking behind adding it was it would be good for us in the context of things that our oxytocics aren't going to help with, like cervical lacerations that we don't have the capacity to repair, and like, other bleeding from lacerations. And so, yes, for like, uterine atony, obviously oxytocin is going to be better in a first line. And I also have concerns over the argument of us not having it, if we can get EMS to have it, because, like, during the pandemic, sometimes we can't, like, 911 is a busy signal, and it can be significant amounts of time for them to get to us. And especially since, you know, we are serving all of Oregon and in rural places, it might be significant time for EMS to get to us. But I'm curious, there are some of us who have experience with TXA. I'm wondering, Lynette, if you, you're probably driving right now, but I would love to hear your thoughts on this, since it is in the formulary in Washington, and what that looks like when you're able, but...
Yeah. I don't think it's actually specific in Washington in which ways we can give it, but I can double-check on that. I have used it. The time that I'm remembering, the most recently using it, the mom had undiscovered help and was, the uterotonics weren't working. We gave it to her in conjunction with calling 911, and we were able to stabilize her before EMS arrived, even in an urban setting. We do give it IV over slowly. And I am also aware of the studies out there about PO being non-effective and about the IM, you know, having some limited studies and still trying to understand, I'm with Wendy, still trying to understand if, whether or not that's effective and in what conditions it might be a good option. But I absolutely think that it's critical for us to have it as a slow drip IV.
This is Meredith Mance. We did have it in the birth center I worked at in Texas, and it was just as a slow IV drip as well. And with us, there was, the way it was written into our policies and procedures, was it was to be used as, kind of like Wendy was saying, as a stopgap to get to the hospital. So it was kind of written into our policies that if we used it, we were on the way, or EMS was being activated. It was meant to buy you time while you were waiting for EMS to get there. And I don't have experience, like, this was the first I was ever reading of the PO use, so that was really interesting to me, but I, like Lynette, have no background or experience with the PO use.
Thanks, Meredith. That's helpful context. Yeah, I think that when we were discussing adding both TXA and tributalene, that we were talking about them as sort of stopgap measures just to help stabilize people before or during the process of transferring care. And we weren't able to add tributalene because that would require a change of the statute, but as an antihemorrhagic, we can consider TXA. And I think that, like, it seems pretty clear that we have the authority to do that. So I know Wendy was talking about not particularly supporting it, and that we can expect pushback from elsewhere about it, but it seems, my understanding is that it's us that gets to decide. The board, like, we can make that decision. I mean, obviously, we're just drafting it now, and it's going to go to a rack, and hopefully they'll get us good information that we can then decide on, on the other end. And obviously, with public input and all of that, but it is ultimately for us to decide if we want to add it or not. But I definitely do want to hear, you know, all the concerns.
Yeah, I mean, this is Wendy. I mean, I do, if, you've got to have a pharmacist on that rack, right, and you've, you've got to have emergency, I think you've got to have emergency medical services on the rack, just, you know, in my opinion. And I, I do, I do, I mean, there, I agree that I think there are significant risks. On the other hand, I also, we very, very, very rarely see it, and so I want to feel supportive, but I was kind of polling our inpatient people about its use in the field without an automatic move to the hospital, and there was a lot of concern. So if, if we, you know, one of the things I think we need to consider, and I mean, again, right, sort of up to our board to draft, but I do think that, like, a mandatory transfer to the hospital via EMS, you know, not via private car, et cetera, may need to be written into that if the recommendation is to be able to give it IV.
What are you seeing as the utility of having an EMS provider on the rack?
I think that they need to be able to comment on the issues that are seen in the field of administering it. I mean, this is, there's, this, this, there's, there's very distinct studies about TXA. There's field use and there's inpatient use, right? And I think that they are the ones that have the experience of having this done in the field, and we need to hear from them what their experiences are. So I think we need to have people that have used this in the field to see whether administration in the field has yielded any issues, because you cannot equate inpatient administration of TXA to in-the-field administration of TXA.
But it sounds, Wendy, it sounded like what you were saying at the beginning was that you didn't get a lot of response from EMS, or that it was inconsistent between counties as far as if they were, if they were actually using it, and that they weren't actually using it for postpartum hemorrhage. So I wonder how, how, how relatable that is. I mean, obviously, like, it's used for trauma and hypovolemic shock and things like that, but it's kind of like, we were, it's more in our scope of practice than theirs to be treating postpartum hemorrhage. Doesn't mean their perspective isn't helpful, certainly, but it didn't, it didn't sound like they were necessarily using it in this way.
Well, they're not, I mean, I can't speak to every county. I know that the one county I was able to speak for does not have, as I said, obstetrical hemorrhage in their use of it. It doesn't matter. I mean, what we're interested in is what are the effects on patient stability and vital signs when it's used in the field. And I think we have got to consider that as a part of the approval process for use in the field. So we need to hear the experience of people that are using it in the field, because that's the concern of all the people that I talk to about having this in the field is what, what happens. And especially if, you know, if someone doesn't get transported to the hospital, or there's a significant delay in transport. And I hear you, Kelsey, that, yeah, you know, there are, there are time delays for EMS, and I get it for sure, although, you know, all the protocols suggest, you know, while giving it as soon as possible, there's no time to, that you have to give it, and just within three hours is the recommendation. And so, you know, that does still fall within the range of time of giving it by EMS. So they, my rationale for, like, saying EMS is they do have improved monitoring systems than what you have in a, in a community birth.
Yeah, I do think it, like, if it's something we're going to be administering, it's really important for us to understand, you know, the potential side effects and impacts that it's going to have on the people we're giving it to. I do have some concern about specifically trying to solicit experiences of EMS, just because I don't, it sounds like the people who are using it probably aren't using it particularly often, and, like, expert opinion is no longer considered evidence. And so I just, I think that the N of the experiences that people will be talking about will be small enough that we might be getting biased and skewed input. And so I have a preference to stick with the evidence on the understanding of the risks and side effects. But, I mean, I think, you know, public input is really important, and so whether that's from EMS or anyone else, I think that that will definitely take all of, all of those stories into consideration. But I'd like to, my preference is to focus on making evidence-based decisions.
Well, I'm gonna put in, I'm gonna put in a request that we have some experiential provider be on, and I do think having, if you, if that experienced provider is an inpatient provider, what I'm saying is you will, I suspect you will get very little support. You may get more support from an in-the-field provider, and, and I, I think we need to be working with EMS on this. This is, this is a, this is a really important topic that need, cannot be managed in, within a vacuum without sort of the full circle of people that are supporting what is done in the community. And part of that is emergency medical services.
Sure. Yeah, I love us not working in a vacuum, because we definitely don't. Would it, would it fit your parameters if it was a midwife who's worked other places or who has used EMS in the field on our rack? I mean, has used TXA, not used EMS in the field. That was a slip up.
I mean, one, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I guess, but I really do feel like there has to be some EMS component to this, because these patients, in my opinion, need to be transferred for monitoring if, if we get to that point. I think, I think, that's how I feel. And I, I think that this issue does need to be considered in all the ways that we should be considering how it's administered. So one of the reasons to have them on the rack is to make this a very, you know, a very transparent approach to emergency, because that's what this is, emergency medical care. And I just feel like, you know, there's already this sometimes antagonistic, we do this, you do that. And I think bringing them in is super important, and giving, I mean, I am, to be perfectly honest, I was horrified that this is not on the protocol of the county that we, you know, that I called. It's crazy, right?
Yeah.
And so I, I feel like this has got to, this, this issue has got to be brought front and center. And so I, I feel like they are a big component of how we should be approaching this, especially for our county, my county, Multnomah, and potentially Washington, and maybe Marion, where, you know, EMS is not the second line. It's readily available, and we need to be, you know, bringing them in for emergent situations. I mean, you know, I just think we have to respect what hemorrhage does to pregnant people and the risk of mortality and morbidity, and these are really, really, really acute and dangerous situations. And I think that we need to treat them. Part of that is bringing in emergency medical services to make sure they understand the, you know, the ongoing concern that we have with how these patients are being managed.
Yeah, I absolutely think that it's important to have crossover and communication. And I think that, like, I don't necessarily feel like we can make rules in in that, like, I don't, knowing that not all EMS is even carrying TXA makes me want it more in our board. And I do think, you know, remembering what Colleen always used to say, that we can't legislate common sense. Like, so many of the things that we are able to do is in conjunction with transferring. And at some point, I think we have to acknowledge that, you know, we can't legislate people doing the right thing, but in situations where somebody's actively bleeding and I'm trying to transport them, I want all the tools that I can have. And I think that's I don't think, I don't want to use TXA to keep somebody out of the hospital.
Could I jump into this at some point with the back and forth? I just, this is Meredith Mance, sorry. I just wanted to add something into this, because it does kind of feel like we're, we're going back and forth on the same thing. I don't think anyone is arguing, like, having perspective of EMS. I also, what do I agree, my experience with TXA is using it in, you know, a transfer situation. I also, what do I agree, my experience with TXA is using it in, you know, a transfer situation already. But I also want to point out that just because we have access to a thing, doesn't mean that all midwives are going to carry it, first of all. And second of all, we still do have required LDMV for anyone carrying medication. So I think we have this ability to also write in how it's used. No one should be carrying a medication that they're not signed off and trained to use. And maybe part of this is adding, you know, when we add it to the formulary, when everyone renewes, they have to do a TXA class or things like that. But I just wanted to add that we do have more than just yes or no. It's not just this blanket, like, everyone uses it or no one uses it, right? I think there, there is a spectrum that we want to consider and I think it's access, not just you must use it TXA or you have it. Um, and it's like, I do think there are a little more nuances to it than that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, Meredith. That was another thing was, we had it on our plan to draft a change in the legend drugs and devices section, just that you don't use anything that you haven't been trained to use. That was a recommendation. I don't think that that change made it into the, this draft. At least if it did, it's not in a different color.
I did ask Heather about that just in advance because she did, I wanted to make sure I understood that. She did say that there is required to be training on any of these that are in this list, right?
I think that, um, what we specifically wanted was to make sure it says that because in the past, when things have been added, like when we added GBS antibiotics, they added a whole extra class that people had to use before they could administer antibiotics and carry them. And we didn't necessarily think that this necessitated like a training that was outlined in the rule. So we just wanted clarity in the rules that you only use things that you've been trained about. So like for people who did, who wanted to renew their license but didn't want to carry TXA, they wouldn't have to get training about it. But if that's already in there, then.
I mean, that's what Heather said. It's not in this rule. I think specifically, I think it must be in a different rule is what she had indicated to me yesterday. But since, you know, we'll, we'll be able to follow up with them and make sure since they'll be able to listen to the recording and just to ensure that that understanding is conveyed.
Does anyone else have thoughts on TXA or where we've added it? It seems like there's like we maybe want it in the IV administration portion as well.
Can you read how it, how it says?
Yeah, so it's just in the list of all the medications we can use. And under the IM list, it says tranexamic acid. And then under the oral use, it just says tranexamic acid.
I mean, there's, there's really no data on using it IM in
Yeah, I wondered if that was, I wondered if that was a mistake and it was supposed to be under the IV and oral use.
And I don't know what, yeah, I mean, I don't know why you would use it. I guess, I mean, I guess if you don't have any oxytocin available, I don't know why you'd use it orally either. I mean, I just worry about sort of like, I, I don't know, just kind of having it randomly available. It is a very specific agent that needs to be used very specifically. And I, I mean, I agree that training is necessary and
Yeah, and I think that that's absolutely why I, I would love it for there to be something clear about we're only using things that we've been trained to use in the rules. Because a lot of these, I mean, a lot of our medications have really specific things, but in particular TXA. If we add it. So I guess what do we, what kind of draft do we want to send to the rack? Where do we want TXA listed?
I mean, I think it should be an IV, not IM, as we've already discussed. And orally, I mean, I guess, wasn't there one of those studies that, that it was like, if it was used together with CytoTech, it was a tiny bit more effective than just CytoTech? If somebody didn't have the tosin, I mean.
No, it's for pro, but it was for prophylaxis.
Right.
Yeah, so it wasn't in the, in the moment, it did not do any of the things.
Yeah, I mean, I would just be adding it IV. Oh, sorry, Meredith.
Pretty much gonna act, I felt what you said. I feel like IV is the only, is kind of the logical step to me. My instinct says that, you know, if it's, the evidence is only showing a prophylactic effect with oral, then essentially if we're thinking they're going to need that level of prophylaxis, they should be ripped out anyway. Right? So I feel like, like IV only would be like, IV would only be the appropriate use for me, I think.
Yeah, I think my only hesitancy in removing it from the IM section is like future-proofing our rules a little bit. Like Wendy was saying, there might be more applications of it IM. And if that's, you know, accurate and applicable to our situations, it would be nice to not have to open the rules again to put it back. But, um, it, not a hill I'm going to die on by any means. So just, does anyone, so do we want to put it just in IV? That seems kind of what people are saying. Or do we want to leave it? All possible rounds.
This is one I, and I think I'm
Makes the most sense to do IV. So Christine says IV only. Lynette, what were you saying?
Same thing, same thing. I, I would propose, I understand trying to future-proof our rules, but also, uh, I think we need to stay evidence-based as well. And then not give people an indication to think that there's evidence behind the IM at this point that is favorable in our situation.
Makes sense. Any last TXA thoughts?
Are you thinking also in the rule that it would have something about the education and then something about this is given it with transport in process?
We
Anything in terms of that?
It sounds like there's already a requirement that we're trained for the things that we're carrying. I would like to see something added to that. That just makes it clear that you're not using anything you haven't been trained in.
So if you look actually above the rule, directly above this, um, I, so I don't know your guys' rules super well. So I don't know if this is exactly what Heather was referring to, but if you look at 332 dash uh, zero two six zero 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 sub one, it says an LDM is prohibited from purchasing or administering legend drugs and devices until the continuing education listed in the other OAR has been completed and attestation submitted to the office upon renewal. Is that not the right one, Sylvie?
Nope, that's no, that's for the LDND that's required training that they have to do. They, um, they don't have to have done it prior to getting a license. They have to do it within the first year of obtaining a license. So they can't administer those drugs until they've actually taken the class. That's what that's referred to.
Okay. So do you know where the rule is for the, that Heather's referring to? Cause she didn't actually tell me what it really was.
We'll have Sam, we'll have Sammy look it up because we, the other part is, is we can open that, we can open that up if need be too. So Sam, Sammy will get to it. She, she'll listen to all this. She knows exactly what they're talking about. So we don't have to make that decision today. So, but I want, I do want to be clear, you know, we need to resummarize. You guys talk about stuff for a long period of time. So I want to resummarize something for Sammy. So it's my understanding that you want this only in the IV administered part of the rule only, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Are we ready to move on, Kelsey, or do you want to stay here?
Um, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay.
Do we want to go to peer review or growth restriction?
Growth restriction, it feels shorter.
Yeah, that does feel lower hanging fruit. Trying to find what page it's on. Okay. So basically we had intended for growth restriction to be encompassed in abnormal fetal surveillance. But that wasn't clear, so we're just adding it as its own line fetal growth restriction.
What page are you on?
Um, there's an eight on it. And it's under indications to transfer antepardum.
So if you're looking at the materials, it's slide 13 down the bottom of the page, it has an eight. So it's the number eight page of the rule that's currently open, but it's slide 13 of your materials.
I think my only nitpicky thing would be that I would like to see it in front of, I would like it to be O and the next, and the other, I would like O and P switched just because we kind of tried to line these up in the order in which you might find them. And so the abnormal fetal surveillance, we had talked about mostly being post-dates, so just putting that last. But I don't care that much. Does anyone have any concerns with adding fetal growth restriction to indications to transfer? And Wendy, can you just confirm that fetal growth restriction is the current? Or anyone, I guess, confirm that that's the current terminology?
That, that is the current terminology.
You said that, like, it might be changing. Is that a?
No, no.
Okay. Okay.
Only, only, I'm having a little trouble on my phone getting in and out. So it's, and, and I am post-call two nights, meaning I work two nights in a row and am exhausted. So my tone and my ability to speak as usual is a little compromised. But no, at this point fetal growth restriction is the current terminology. And I, I feel like it's a sticker. It's, it's not, it doesn't seem to have the same offense as so many of the other things that we used. And it kind of encompasses more. And I like, I like our using it because it changes with the definition.
Great.
It's not being too, it does put the onus on the person to understand what it means. And I think we should all be understanding what it means, you know, so yeah. Yeah, that's, that's okay by me.
And so just for historical context, the last version of the rules had this issue in it as an indication to transfer. It was listed under the old name and then we intended for it to stay but in another thing, not, and it wasn't explicitly named. So this isn't necessarily a new rule. We're just clarifying the rules. Any other thoughts on fetal growth restriction as an indication to transfer antepardum? All right. Great. That was an easy one. Now let's talk about peer review.
This is Sylvie. So Sammy and I chatted and I've got a lot of her information and her mindset. But I do believe you guys have the, over in the gray section where it has options and it has, here's where you need to make a decision kind of thing. And then I have a few questions that she wants. So if I jump in, it's just to make sure that she is getting all of her information addressed. So go ahead.
So this is Lynette, and I just wanted to comment that overall, as I'm reading this, and granted, it could be I'm in a similar situation to Wendy where I've been up several nights in a row. But, um, I, this actually confuses it pretty significantly for me. It does not clarify.
So Lynette, are you talking about the difference between option one and option two?
No, I'm talking about the whole fact of all of these words that we've added. I don't understand why we're changing all these things and adding all these things and why we're, I thought we were just trying to clarify what the entity that peer review was housed within needed to look like.
My understanding is you guys had also had some conversations about how many people and where those people needed to have either experience or work. So that's why that is on the table too about, um, kind of are the LDMs obviously not in your practice, but how many of them in peer review? Which kind of I think goes along with trying to figure out whether you need to have an entity or not. So, because you could also just put the entity in one of the sentinel events if that's, you know, but that's entirely up to you guys.
Yeah, I feel like there's a lot in here because I don't know that we really were super clear last time about what we wanted. And my understanding was it seemed like we either needed to clarify what we meant about the entity thing or just take it out. So does anyone have thoughts or feelings on which way we go about the entity thing?
I think that, um, this is Meredith Klein, the entity sort of intention of that, right, was making or ensuring that there was quality improvement happening, et cetera. And that our last conversation, we may be settled on, um, you can't really legislate that either. You know, that it's pretty specific how it's stated there about what's intended to be done in peer review and how does it say, leaving suggestions for quality improvement, et cetera. That maybe we just take it out. Cause it, I mean, that's the thing that seems like it was most confusing to, to midwives, right? You were, you were saying you were hearing a lot about that from folks, Kelsey. And maybe adding it to a sentinel event, having that be more structured of a peer review. But seems like removing confusion is the, is the goal. Is the goal here while doing, being specific enough that the goals of peer review are being obtained, but we can't ensure that where people are attesting that they're doing that. And it's, it's pretty laid out already, I think, even without that.
Does anyone uh, want to keep the entity piece or some, some other way of attaching peer review to quality improvement?
You know, one, one thing I'm sort of struggling with, and I, I know I don't really, I don't have a, you know, good idea of the layout and everything, but boy, right now, we just, just, I, I think I'm just going to say this as, you know, as a clinician in a place, we, um, we are just having a problem with an entity, you know, with a particular entity that we can't, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, with that we, you know, we cannot connect with in any way. We can't assure any sort of, you know, level of QI and we've had some real patient care issues and it is creating just havoc for us. And this is a group that will not engage with OMC and there's no oversight and it's really, really problematic. And I mean, I, I don't, I just think in thinking about this, we somehow have to think about these groups that are just sort of rogue because they're giving the rest of you a really bad rap and, and I am, we're frustrated, we don't know what to do and it's really problematic. So I want you to think about it in this way that, that somehow, you know, connects everybody. I, I don't know how to say it, but it's been so problematic that it's, it really needs to be considered by this group, I think.
So Wendy, I have a oh, do, how do hospital-based organizations or other MD organizations like family practice doctors who often have several clinic offices and still end up, you know, maybe transferring for various reasons to higher level providers? How do, how is it written for them? How do they, how are they required to have peer review that, um, you know, helps?
Um.
Is there a model?
Uh, I, I mean, there's there's quality and there's credentialing issues that sort of come into play more, I think, than a peer review sort of oversight. I, I believe, I believe that if that's what you're getting at, that yeah, I mean, that in play, I mean, and, uh, I mean, certainly through the concern level board licensure or whatever. But yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I, I don't, I with no structured oversight, you know, um, it's just, it's, I don't know, it's problematic. And I know, I know the OMC has had issues and had the one time where I do feel like, you know, be, may, maybe there has to be some sort of mandate by, you know, an oversight committee, more of an oversight structured committee. I don't, I don't know what to do about it, honestly.
I feel like we're kind of going in this man, I feel like we're going in circles a little bit again because Wendy, I feel like it was the opposite sentiment last time of like trying to legislate. The entity was problematic because it was kind of pushing people more towards OMC as the only option. So now I kind of feel like we're going in circles.
I agree, and that was my own, I know, and I agree, it's my own.
Oh, I think we might have lost you. Where did you go?
Fault, but this has come up, you know, over the past month, seriously, and it's super problematic. And I, yeah.
So is there, this is Lynette again, and is there an opportunity for a particular group of midwives that are, you know, you're seeing or other hospital providers or other midwives are seeing, isn't there? I mean, that's what the board is about, we're the oversight committee. And so if you're having a problem with people not practicing safely, then shouldn't that be reported to the board or to OMC through the complaint process?
Yes, it should, it's just that as you know, the place is in a lot of ways, it's not entirely clear that these, these problems fall under, you know, administrative rule and in fact, I mean, I don't think they do. I think they're really more of a quality issue than, than, than a rule, um, rule, you know, pro, problem.
Yeah, I think that that's, the rules can never cover everything. And so our job is just what can we do to help keep people safe? And I think that quality improvement is one of the things that helps keep people safe. And so how, how can we incorporate that in a way that is clear and makes sense and does what we're wanting it to do? Is that possible?
So you do have the option of, um, because it is still going to a rack and I, and it seems like you guys are, you know, not, this wasn't exactly what you had hoped to see and it doesn't seem to clarify it for some of you. The option you could do is send it to the rack and ask them to sort of really maybe delve into some, you could even have them, you know, look into other practices to see how like, you know, the medical board conducts peer review or whatever, you know, to try, try and compare it to how it's done for other types of licensees and then come back to you with, you know, it doesn't have to, you know, the rack can, you can ask them to do sort of a deeper dive into this and come back to you with some additional options, which in that respect might be, you know, useful because you'll have people on the rack that, you know, have experience probably going through this peer review process in and of itself, and so they might, you know, have some insight to how they think it could work better as well. So it might be useful to send it to them and ask them to bring it back.
That seems like it might be the best option.
This is Meredith Mance again, I agree, I think having them kind of hashed it out a little bit and maybe bring some options to us might be a, a better way to kind of look at them. So I agree with Wendy and Kelsey, the quality improvement is the goal and safety is the goal. I just don't know that requiring an entity is what achieves that goal necessarily. Like that's where I'm kind of stuck on it. But I agree, I think getting some, some deeper insight with like some different perspectives would, would really help.
Okay, so this is Sylvie, so we can leave it how it is, which includes all the little comments. And so that will get that conversation going with the rack, whether they want, you know, you know, to do all the different stuff and Sammy can walk through all that. So we can, we can leave it as it is and just have the rack start dealing with it. Does that work?
I think the only clear thing to me is that I don't find the addition of attesting before LDM useful in the draft of option one.
Do you want to pick it, do you want to pick, there's some options there, first claiming, requesting, affirming, trying to differentiate that LDM from all the other LDMs?
I mean, but I think because the rule applies to everyone, like all the LDMs at the same peer review can count that peer review as a peer review. So the distinction doesn't feel useful to me.
I, that's where I'm confused. So I thought the peer review was if you and I go to a peer review, I am the one who's supposed to be having my charts reviewed and you are supposed to be helping me. Doesn't necessarily mean that you now have had a peer review because I'm not looking at your chart.
So that's not how we've done it in the past. Like, uh, my understanding of like peer review is you attend a peer review where somebody's cases are being reviewed. If we want to prescribe that each midwife has a number of cases reviewed, that, that would be different, which is like what Maz has. But no, like our attending peer review just means you go to peer review. We've never had a prescriptive, you have to get your charts reviewed and that's what counts as peer review.
And that would make sense because if, obviously if I didn't do any births this year, I still have to attend peer review, but you wouldn't have any charts to look at. I got you, got you, so we don't need to differentiate, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
But that's maybe something to push to the rack. Do, is, is that maybe a tactic that we could use? Is if you're going to births, you have up to this many cases reviewed? That seems like an option.
Yeah, and the other option I think too is the, um, if you, you know, the sentinel events could be a little bit more detailed restrictive as in you have to have a, an entity that is yet to be extremely defined. Review your charts, that chart, so. But they can make all those decisions at the rack.
Great. Looking forward to seeing what they give back to us.
All right, is there, oh, sorry.
Yeah, any more thoughts on any other rules, things? Of our draft? Oh, I had one thought. We've talked before about, um, license renewal and wanting like an inactive. Like if somebody's oh my gosh, my brain stopped working, um.
Somebody kind of wants to put their license in a dormant status?
Yes.
Because they're not practicing. I do believe, I'd have to do some digging into that, but I do believe that might be a statute change.
Okay.
Because the office, yeah, the office has a set of rules that pertain to all 18 boards and programs that talks about the active, inactive, expired, that thing.
Oh, okay, yeah, I looked at our statute and I didn't see a thing, but that makes sense if it's under the other board statute, um. And then the other thing was, um, license reciprocity. Our statute says that we can accept another licensing exam. But that's like the extent and I, um, I didn't know how well that was reflected in the rules or if we wanted to add some other kind of, if we could flesh that out in our rules for new licensees. Because like, like Meredith Mance, when she moved here, had to do all of the same initial things as someone getting their first license. Maybe this is like parking lot for like a later time, but I just wanted to see if anyone else was interested in addressing those things.
We can, this is Sylvie, we can definitely have it on the parking lot. I do believe at the moment you only have these rules open.
Okay.
So definitely Sammy's going to listen to all this, so Sammy will definitely take notes of all that, so.
Okay, we can parking lot it then.
Okay. Okay, so before we go too far on, so also in your materials is the rule schedule and the rules advisory committee membership. And I did write on there based on your conversation, um, for the advisory committee membership EMS. Do you still want Sammy to add EMS to that? Bob, is Nathan watching that Wendy's trying to get in through the?
I'm back in, I got thrown off and am now back in.
Okay, it just, it keeps popping up on our screen, but she's there. She's in.
Can you hear me? No?
Wait, yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's a glitch on Teams, it looks like.
So Kelsey, did you want me to add EMS to the committee membership? Pediatricians is, you guys all have this list, let's get to.
I feel like the thing that Wendy, there's maybe two different things that Wendy was approaching with wanting EMS. And one of them just seems like someone experienced using TXA. And so to me, that doesn't necessarily have to be EMS, that could be a midwife who's used it or some other provider who has experience using it. In a community setting, but the other thing, it seemed like Wendy was looking for like collaboration and communication across who has what and how things are going. And I don't know if having an EMS member on our rack is going to achieve that objective. But I mean, Wendy's here, I don't know, Wendy, you can let me know if I got that wrong.
I mean, I, I think both your points, Wendy, Smith, both, both your points are correct. I, I think this is an opportunity to engage EMS with our services. I think it's incredibly important to have that engagement. I think this is really an overlap issue. Because one, I do, you know, let's just say the practical, practical part of TXA is that you can give it twice in 30 minutes. So, okay, if it's approved and you can give it in the, in the home, it can be given again in, in, by EMS. And, and I think that it's really important that we get this issue in front of them. So I'm not just saying bring in some ambulance provider, right? I'm sort of saying bring in an EMS leader who, who hears this and sees the importance of it and then, you know, starts the conversation and the engagement around this issue that has incredible overlap. So I, I know there's, I mean, I just think this is also just a really great time to engage. I mean, there is, there is this little bits of antagonism, I believe, between the services and that we're trying to get it, we're trying to make it better. And I, I think this offers an opportunity. Um, and this is really a, 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 I think the, the perfect time to bring them in. And so I would, I would recommend, um, an EMS leader and I can be responsible for trying to get them on it if that's what you want.
This is Meredith, is it possible to, I mean, could we, I guess I just want to make sure that we don't get held up forming the rack if we can't find an EMS person that wants to speak with us also. So I want to make sure we don't paint ourselves into a corner with the rack requirement because of that. So is it possible to put it as like a wish list invitation, but if they, if we don't find anyone, we're not going to hold it up?
Okay. The other thing that I'm thinking is that this rack is going to also address like our peer review standards and, you know, the fetal growth restriction, but I don't really anticipate that taking very long with the rack either. But I don't want to like prescribe that there's an EMS person for our peer review section.
No.
So maybe could we just request that like an EMS leadership person is like a guest at the rack for the TXA part so that they don't hold up the peer review part of it? If it's just one rack looking at both of those topics?
I mean, sure, that, that's, that's very reasonable. I, the same with, because I also think we need pharmacy involved as well and obviously they don't belong on. So I, I feel like this is really a very separate issue, honestly, than the other issue.
Does it make sense to have two different racks then, or is that just kind of crazy?
It seems like since we have to represent so many different communities, because we have to represent everyone who's going to be impacted by these, it makes more sense to me to just have one rack and then just specify that there's pharmacist and EMS involvement for the TXA piece of it? Instead of having them actually be members of the rack? Can we do that? Can we say we want these guests or experts for part of the rack?
Well, the more you keep think, talking about it, your rules are going to affect EMS individuals. If Wendy says that you guys, you know, if you guys could administer, then obviously EMS needs to know because now they can only do one, they can't do two. Say for it's a rural and it takes them a while to go to the hospital kind of thing. So your rules would affect them, so they would be one of those entities where your rules affects them. So just having them on the rack would just check off one more of the groups that the rules cover. check off one more of the groups that the rules cover.
And then racks just have a quorum like we do, right? They don't have to have everyone, so they could just not come to the other parts that aren't.
Correct. And currently Sammy has the first one on June ninth. That doesn't mean that that's the only one, they may have more. And they may, you know, use everybody on the first one that has to deal with, I don't know, the first set of rules and then have another one that then deals with this, the TXA stuff. And not everybody would have to attend both. You still have to have quorum, but.
And this is Lynette, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like they only have a month though to provide some proposal. Because the board meeting to approve proposed rules is on July seventh. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, but it can also change based on, we can always push it back. Because even if we push back your July board meeting to approve proposed rules, you could do it at your August meeting and we'll still have everything done in time for January. Our ultimate goal is to have these January one, that also is not set in stone. You know, the better your rules are, and if it takes longer, it takes longer. You know, you want your rules to be as, as good as possible. But we'll see how it goes, it's, you know. Okay, so that, sorry.
That's okay, just to be clear, if we had them approved by November, could they still be implemented in January? Because it looks like there's a couple of extra meetings on that list that don't necessarily have to do with approving these rules.
Yes, you could actually do, so the the timeline stuff starts before when, and the public comment period and all that stuff is when you file the proposed. And that, the proposed and the permanent have to be apart so far. But once you do the permanent and vote for the permanent, the effective date could be the same day you do, do it. So you could actually adopt permanent in December and they'd still go into effect January one. So yes, there's a lot of leeway in there.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I want to make sure, so Sammy has three questions, I just wanted to make sure that we talk about real quick. So it's on record so that she can make sure that she hears it. So back to the rules about the peer review. It was her understanding that you guys were talking about making the peer review could, changing the amount of people it had to be. So she wanted to know exactly how many individuals total should participate in the peer review, including the individual being reviewed. Do you want like three, two, four? Do you not want to change it? Or do you want the rack to figure that out?
Yeah, I don't remember specifically wanting to change the number of people that constitute a peer review. That seems like three was fine.
And that's totally fine, I just wanted to make sure that, I want to make sure that she gets her questions answered, because obviously she's not here to ask them. Her other question is, does the board want every single person who is participating in the peer review to do community births or just one or two or three? So do you want everybody to have experience in community births? Or do you want a, at least half of them or just that discussion?
I mean, I think that the, the minimum requirement is that there's three LDMs who kind of by definition are gonna do community births. And then I don't necessarily want to make rules about who can't come to peer review. That doesn't seem like our. Yeah, I think for it to count as a peer review, it meets the minimum that we've laid out. And then I don't know that anyone in particular needs to be excluded. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that. I think that that maybe comes from Wendy wanting to have it count if there was a, a review happening at a hospital. Like a joint review, I think if there's three LDMs, it can count as a peer review if it's from two different practices. Any other thoughts concerns?
This is Lynette, and my only thought on is it, is that peer means someone that's like you. So it's, this is peer review, it's not incident review or sentinel event review that might include other providers, this is peer to peer, so other people that do the same thing you do.
Does it seem like it's not peer review? If there's if there are other providers?
I think Kelsey, in the, in the scenario you described where you're reviewing at a hospital and there's three midwives from, you know, one of which is from a different practice, then it can totally count. But the point I think is to not only get perspective from, you know, a provider that maybe works in a different environment, but also the perspective from providers that do work in the same environment that you work in. Because that's, that's important and that's the goal of peer review.
So currently your rule says each peer review must be conducted with providers who perform community births.
Yes.
So maybe Angela can provide some perspective on whether or not that word must would, is exclusionary of other provider types, but I.
I would, for one, I, we don't want to have her give legal advice, just like off the fly. I think anybody who does a community birth, whether it's in, like a nurse at a birthing center. They're doing a community birth, they're not an LDM, but they're doing a community birth. So that, that would cover, cover other providers. Because other providers work in those birthing centers besides just LDMs.
To me, the must is like it doesn't count as a peer review if you're not with any other community birth providers. I don't read that as other provider types can't be involved. It seems like it's a minimum requirement that for it to count as peer review, there needs to be people who are your peers. Which sort of seems redundant if it's already requires other LDMs. I guess maybe the context would be if someone is retired from doing births or not actively doing births that are still an LDM. Do they count towards one of the people for peer review? That seems to be where it's a little bit different requirement.
Well, it's all good conversation and thoughts for Sammy to listen to and to have the racks address. I just wanted to get it so that you guys talked about it, so. And then her third question, you guys have already talked about, about the, the, her third review is about the entity. And whether or not the entity was staying going or if you wanted to do it to the sentinel events. And so you've already discussed that. And so all my questions have been addressed. So if nobody else has anything on the rules, we can move on to item number four, which is the public and interested parties feedback. And Kelsey, you do have Silka on the phone and she would like to make a comment. So if you could read your script, that would be great.
Yeah, let me find that one. Okay, at this time, the Board of Direct Entry Midwifery will hear public and interested parties' feedback. Members of the public, please wait until you have been recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and affiliation to the board for the record.
Hi, Silka, this is Bob at HLO, are you on the phone still? Barely, hold on. Okay, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
I can, board, can you hear her?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Silka.
Thank you, this is Silka Akerston from the Oregon Midwifery Council and thanks for this opportunity to give public comment. First, I wanted to really appreciate the clear agenda today, it made it really easy for public participation. And I know that this is something I've commented on before and I just wanted to thank you around that. And then I have a few comments about different things. I my first comment is about TXA and OMC doesn't have a particular position on TXA. So I want to make a comment just as an individual, not representing OMC, that I really hope the board will proceed with caution about this. And I have similar concerns to some of the concerns that Wendy brought up. I also would really love to learn from midwives who are already using TXA about how they do the gradual dose over ten minutes with the IV equipment that we have at home. I, I, I feel like from, maybe it's that I have limited IV skills in comparison, but I would be challenged to dose it in such a specific way over ten minutes. And have some concern about the hypotension and just want us to proceed with caution around that. Okay, back to OMC's chat. I with the fetal growth restriction addition back to the rule, which makes sense to me, I want to be cautious that the way that the board is thinking about this is really looking at gross restriction over time. Because sometimes I'm seeing fetal growth restriction diagnoses that are actually just low estimated fetal weight, not low growth over time, not specific to FGR diagnosis. And that concerns me if a midwife is getting that kind of information. And then that's being counted as FGR. And I'm especially concerned about that with some specific racial and ethnic groups where there are babies that are small for the kind of rubrics that are being, the general rubrics that are being used. But are perfectly appropriate size if you are using Southeast Asian growth chart or things like that. So I just, I just want to voice that, that piece of caution. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is something that I brought up at the February meeting when there was kind of the rules parking lot. And I know that it's not gonna be addressed now, but I just really want to ensure that it is in the rules parking lot for future time. Which is, I think at some point we need some rules about LDM responsibilities towards student midwives and that provides some protections for student midwives. Because we have some current situations and past situations where there has been like serious violation of student midwife rights or abuse of student midwives. And neither the LDM rules nor the kind of CPM credential have a root for addressing those concerns. So there's currently not a place for recourse when the when a student midwife is harmed. And then the last thing that I wanted to comment about is the peer review. And I'm really happy that the decision was to go with the Rules Advisory Committee for this. I wonder if it would be useful actually to separate this as its own Rules Advisory Committee? So that there's a Rules Advisory Committee about the TXA and the FGR? And then a separate Rules Advisory Committee about peer review? Because I think that this issue is so important, it might take a little bit more time and it, it's probably a different set of people who would want to apply to be on this rack in comparison to the other one. And I wanted to review one of the reasons, well, the overarching reason why I think including the requirements about peer review with an entity is so important for LDMs. And that is because sorry, I have to gather my. So the vast majority of providers who attend births attend births within a larger system that has a quality improvement program. Like Wendy or Christine attend births in a system that has a hospital-wide quality improvement program. And a system for careful review of sentinel events. And a way that that system learns from the sentinel events. And providers get, you know, support, education, whatever they need around that sentinel event to improve care. But also the system recognizes things that may have contributed to that central event or things that might need to change to prevent a sentinel event like that in the future. And I think that's essential to good care for birthing people and babies. I think it's essential to public safety. And it's not a function of a regulatory system, it's not a function of licensing. So licensing doesn't, you know, when someone has a complaint against their license, that's a really important safety mechanism. Where they can be evaluated whether there was a violation of the rule or the statute. And where there can be a consequence against the license if it, that was a, you know, important enough, significant enough violation. But that isn't quality improvement, that's just like maintaining a ground floor level that there are unsafe providers practicing. And the vast majority of quality improvement doesn't involve rules violations. Like I have reviewed many, many, many sentinel events over the past many years. And there are often times where you know, a midwife's action or inaction was, could have contributed to a sentinel event. And there was no rule violation at all. And where, you know, a consequence against the license wouldn't address the situation in any way. What addresses the situation is everyone together in a collaborative, constructive way recognizing, you know, the things that might have contributed to this outcome. And recognizing if there are things at the provider or practice level that need to change. Or things in the system that need to change to prevent an outcome like that in the future. And when midwives are just doing peer review on their own, the, you know, forming spontaneous peer review meetings. Some of those peer review meetings will look at things with that level of carefulness and that level of focus on quality improvement. And some of them will spontaneously give that feedback about systems level things that need to change. And some of them won't. And the only way to ensure that there's actually a quality improvement system that every provider, every licensed direct entry midwife provider is participating in is where there to be a requirement to participate. And to me, the requirement should be that some of these, you know, at least one per year and at least for sentinel events should be required to happen through a program. I don't at all think that OMC should be the only program, it'd be amazing if there were other quality improvement programs and it's very, you know, anyone could create one. But there are many instances where under the current rule, the only reason that someone is doing a really structured review for a sentinel event is because that's what and doing a structured review with a quality improvement organization, the only reason they're doing that is because. the only reason they're doing that is because that's required by the rule. And I, I think it's an essential safety feature of the license law. And I, I, you know, I can get into this in more detail in the rack. I hope to be a member of the rack. But I think we would be missing really significant opportunities for quality improvement that are unrelated to licensing and regulation if there wasn't a requirement. I actually think that the requirement should be more clear. And I think that the language can be both simplified and clarified. But that is my comment on that. I'm looking at my notes to see if there was anything else I had to say about that. Um, I think, I think that's all. Oh, I guess the, the last thing I would say about that is I agreed with the comment that it doesn't sound to me like the current law language around peer review excludes other provider types from being part of LDM peer review. I think it just requires that there be other LDM. And I'll be curious to hear what the AAG thinks about. And it's so, it's, the only other thing I'll say is that it's challenging to be this far into meetings where I can't see you or see the material at the same time. And I, I, I wonder when the HLO will think about either having online meetings where we can see each other and gauge whether we can, you know, gauge people's response, see what's happening or, or return to in-person meetings. It's, it's challenging to give public comment and not see it received. That's all.
Silka, thank you. Couple little comments to that. For one, state offices still closed. We do not get to open according to the governor until May 2nd. The other thing is, is we have had, and hopefully they were, they're supposed to actually be there on Monday and, and start working up as a quote to retrofit the boardroom with a whole lot more cameras and a whole lot more stuff. So that there are more, so we can do in-house meetings that will also allow for people to be at home. Because we're not going to require anybody to travel. Obviously, it's way cheaper if people don't travel. And then we're also working on another add-on to Teams to where we can have the public on here. And then they will sit off to the side, their cameras will not be on unless we turn them on for like public comment kind of thing. So we're working on it, Silka. It's, it's just a slow process.
Thank you for that information.
Oh, you're welcome. Bob, is there anybody other than Silka on the phone?
No, she's the only one.
Okay, Silka, we're going to go into executive session. I'm sure you don't want to hang on because it's going to be a long one. Then they'll come out and deliver. Yes.
Your phone is now muted. To unmute, push.
There you go. Go ahead, Kelsey, and read your script and then we'll get all the recordings switched over.
The Board of Direct Entry Midreferee will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602F and ORS 676.595 for the purpose of considering information exempt from the public disclosure at 9:40 a.m. on April 14th, 2022. Representatives of the news media shall be allowed to attend the executive session by conference call. It will be provided for their call and instruction shortly. The public phone line will be muted for the duration of executive session. Are there any representatives of the news media on the public phone line?
No.
No, recognizing there's no news media in attendance, the public phone will be muted for the duration of the executive session. We will return to open session before taking any final action or making any final decisions. We are now in executive session.